It's a little chilly today.
I'll say it's windy.
It's comfortable today. It's gonna be up a couple of degrees. Ready?
Ready whenever you are.
Meeting call to order. This is Tuesday, September 20th. It is now 6:40 PM. Town council meeting in the town council chambers. 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island.
Roll call. Councilman Lachardi.
Here.
Councilman Messier.
Here.
Councilman Bourget.
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson.
Here.
And Council President Goslin.
Here.
Quorum is declared. Consent agenda. Approval of the minutes from the August 16th, 2022, regular town council meeting, and the minutes of the September 6th, 2022, regular town council meeting.
Move approval to consent agenda. I would suggest that, I think Mr. Moyo's name is spelled incorrectly in the minutes, so you might want to correct that.
Do I have a second? Second. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinances. First reading of ordinance amending Chapter 12 offenses miscellaneous Article 1, Section 10, smoking in public buildings on public properties and in vehicles owned by the town.
Move approval to the ordinance.
Second. Move a second, Al.
This is, uh, no smoking of tobacco in public buildings and playgrounds and what have you. When they passed the Cannabis Act, Mark asked me to add cannabis and vaping to the act we already had prohibiting smoking in public buildings. So basically, that's all we did. Put a definition of what cannabis is. And there were a couple of other changes following statutory changes. Mark had contacted a group of other people that are involved in this and we got, I don't know what organizations they're with, but we got their comments that-
There was the two prevention organizations, West Warwick's and Kent County's.
And we got their comments and the couple of changes they recommended. We went with and it's primarily the same thing we always had, except adding smoking of cannabis and vaping to our ordinance in public buildings.
So is this the only change you envision? I guess I thought potentially open container law would sort of be modified to include smoking on Main Street also?
We stay-
And maybe not, but-
We stayed away. How are you going to determine where you're going to allow smoking and non-smoking? And there was this provision that was stricken by the state law about designating smoking areas outside of the building. That was canceled by the legislature. They took that out.
Yeah, you had to be so many feet away and you had to have-
I think that becomes, you know, as a practical matter, what the ordinance says is, if you're on town property, you can't smoke. But we're not going to be, even to the point where we had in there, uh, non-smoking under, I think it was under 18 or 21 in public. And the prevention people showed me the law where they took that away. And the attitude is that smoking is addictive and you shouldn't be punishing people even if they're under 21 for- So for-
Alcohol is addictive. What's the difference?
The- don't ask me, ask the legislature.
Oh, believe me, I wish I could ask them a lot of questions on this because it's ridiculous and what they've done. You know, they did no thought process in a lot of this, in my opinion.
So we basically, basically, I think in a nutshell, took cannabis, took vaping, and added it to the tobacco.
So do we, so with a lot of ordinances, we don't really have any teeth behind it. Do we, what's the teeth behind this? Like who, if somebody, so if somebody's here right out in front on the walkway smoking a cigarette right now?
Well, it is, and it is an offense, and there are penalties.
But who, right, but so is, so when we walk out of this building, somebody's smoking on the side, on the ramp that's on town property. It's a municipal court violation. So who has determination to say, this is a violation, put that out, or you're going to be fined? Who can say that?
We're gonna have the smoking patrol chief, you get that?
No, but that's what's gonna happen.
All joking aside, as long as he's smoking in a paper bag, I think it's all right. We were at a meeting the other day, right here at the gazebo. There were people smoking right in front of us, flicking their cigarettes right over the wall into the grass. So who enforces that? The police. The police were with me. I'm just saying, who do we report that to?
You can't report it to anyone but the police, which is the type of law. However, when the police get there, they know all they're smoking, and then they come swarming.
Right, right, that's the question.
So they say you can-
So, so- Exactly what the councilman said. What teeth? How are we going to enforce this? I know when we were down on the baseball fields, we told parents, get away from the ball field, go go on the other side of the parking lot or whatever, and they honored that. But in other areas, they may not. You know, for instance, the gazebo. Or, you know, a different playground. It could be Crompton, it could be River Point, you know, if they're down there.
It's a police matter. I mean, whether you want to face it or not, it's a police matter.
Okay, it's a police matter.
If you, you know, whether you're gonna call the cops because somebody's smoking or not, that's a different question, but if you want to, you call the cops. I'm sure you're still with that.
Well, I just don't think that, you know, if you call the police, it's, it, yes, it's an offense, but, you know, after talking, many conversations with the chief, it's probably gonna be like this low on the totem pole to come out when there's other issues going on. I mean, it's-
But we, you know, ask Mary Beth about trying to enforce a lean on property. You know? It's-
So the answer is to call the police?
Call the police.
Okay.
And most of the time, I mean, what's gonna happen is the same thing. If you had somebody standing there with an open container, you make them dump it out, you throw to, make them throw it away in a proper receptacle. It's the same thing with a cigarette or a joint. You haven't put it out, throw it away in a proper receptacle. You know, that's about all you're gonna do. You get attitude, but if you have to deal with them over and over again, then things step up and it just changes that way. You know, but, uh, overall, the police officer's not gonna be driving down the street saying, whoa, smoking. You know, it's just not gonna happen. Without a complaint, they're not gonna do anything.
But it's almost as if when somebody goes up to police department and says, I just saw a car speed. Police go out there and say, okay, which car was it? So the police will have discretion, but the only, to answer your question, the only body that can enforce this law would be the police.
Okay.
Any other questions for Al?
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you to Mark and Al for doing this because, uh, as you know, I'm not happy with the way this marijuana stuff is moving at all. And to put this in here, it just gives a little bit more understanding to the community or anybody who happens to look at this, that the danger of marijuana.
I think this-
Inhaling smoke is not good for you, and it really bothers me that governments, not just here in Rhode Island, but around this country, that are out of this side of the mouth saying, don't smoke cigarettes, it's bad for you. Not this side of the mouth saying, smoke marijuana, it's gonna help you somehow. And the American Lung Association, actually, as I looked it up, they have it as marijuana is worse for you than tobacco. Because you inhale it deeper and you hold it there. So therefore, you cause even more damage to your lungs than you do with tobacco, which according to the American Lung Association, or the expert on lungs, that there is same amount of carcinogens and other byproducts from marijuana smokers or is from tobacco smoke. So to me, I think our government needs to stop talking out of both sides of their mouth. And, you know, I think this is helpful for people to have a better understanding.
When I worked on it, I felt this is another one of those laws that the people don't break the laws are gonna follow, and the people who break the laws are gonna ignore.
Like most of them. But just seeing it in there with the dangers listed, I appreciate it.
It's a good step on our books, in my opinion.
I agree.
All right, any other questions for Al? Since this is an ordinance, any public comment on smoking? Hearing none, I'll take- Just come on up to the front and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Karen Senkowitz, and I live at West Warwick Manor. And I have opinions about everything. I remember when smoking first began to be illegal everywhere. And I remember decades ago, I was in Almac's down in Clyde, and some guy lit up a cigarette and everybody went ballistic. So I think a lot of this is going to be solved just by, you know, if you're at a ball field and a little league game, hockey game or something, I think a lot of this will just be solved just by people saying, put that out, or it's not allowed, or, you know, when everybody piling on the person that's not observing what they should be observing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do hope you're right. I'm old enough to remember Almac's also. But my wife and I were walking on the bike path a couple of weeks ago, and there was two girls standing there smoking marijuana. And I said something, and they just laughed and walked away because young people today are not like the young people when we were younger, where somebody saying something would make that effect on us. So I'm hoping you're right. Maybe if enough people say it, maybe something will happen.
Did it ever on the adults? That's the nature of young people.
Exactly. I agree. Thank you.
Thanks for raising the age issue.
There you go.
You remember Almac's, right?
You remember when Almac's was built?
I remember first national AMP.
Yeah, okay.
There you go. Any other questions for Al? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Councilman Lachardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilman Bourget?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
First reading of ordinance amending Appendix C Traffic Ordinances, Angel Street and Elbow Street.
Move the ordinance.
Second. Move a second, Al.
Major Ashenbow issued a traffic committee report to put a one-way sign at the end of Angel Street up on, uh, the northern end. And when I looked at it, I went through the ordinances. The one-way on Angel Street, the signs have been there forever. However, there's no-
2004.
However, there's no ordinance that created those signs, so, oh, we couldn't find one. So all this is doing is legitimizing the signs that have been there forever.
Any questions for Al? And I saw it pop up, and I was like, Al, are you telling me the signs aren't there? Because I drive by the street almost every day myself. Any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none. Councilman Lachardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilman Bourget?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Al.
New business, August 2022 Monthly Finance Report.
Good evening, councilors. Current year tax collections total 20,405,529 and 40 cents, which is 30.05% of the budget for current year taxes. Mind you, this is without motor vehicle as well, so it's very good. We have collected one quarter, however, quite a few taxpayers pay their entire bill when they receive it, and this skews the amount expected to be collected two months into the fiscal year. Obviously, it smooths out as the further quarters are collected. Prior year tax collections total 187,105 dollars and 47 cents, which is equal to 12.47% of the budgeted amount. This line will be adjusted by approximately, this amount is actually a little bit more now, for the 60-day rule and accrued back to fiscal year '22. Overall, revenues are at 21.28%, which is higher than expected 16.67%. This is mainly attributed to the strong collections and higher-than-expected building revenues. Expenditures are trending under budget 11.30%. This is 5.37% below the expected 16.67. The Civic Center has current operating expenditures of 113,915,39 and operating revenues of 114,509. The bank balance as of 9/8 is 18,968,029.45. And the fiscal year '22 audit has commenced, and preliminary audit testing was completed in early August. The team will return in mid-October to complete field work.
Any questions for Kristen?
Could you repeat that, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Kristen. You want to step in for number two?
Consideration of 2024 Budget Calendar.
I know it's early, but as I was looking in April, I realized that in the first time in many, many, many years, the schools have moved up April vacation to the second week following Easter of April. So that's when we usually have our second budget meeting. And I know we tend to shy away from having a meeting during April vacation because of vacations, schools not being able to participate. So I just want to get your input. Would we want to do two public hearings the week of April 4th? So that they're done, still leaving Monday, April 17th as an option for a third? Or do you want to hold one the week of April vacation?
It's up to the council at that point.
It doesn't matter. Whenever, pick the date, I'll write it down.
Okay, so you want to go with two, the week of April 4th?
Yeah, I think we should avoid the vacation.
Yeah, you can avoid it. I mean, I don't have kids that-
Beyond that, I think it's just gonna be, at that time, we might be able to clarify it a little bit more, but-
I mean, we would have our normal first meeting of the month on April 4th, so we could either do the Monday, or we could do the Wednesday, whatever. We pick at that as it gets closer. But I just wanted to get an idea, and that people know too, because if anyone wants to make plans, they can.
We'll stay away from school vacation. Very good, I think.
Any other questions?
Yeah. I don't know, some of us might not be here, so it might be a moot point.
Okay, thank you.
It might change exactly, but who knows? Got plenty of time.
Consideration, a request from Councilman Messier for the immediate removal of benches along the West Warwick Bike Path behind West Warwick Manor on Robert Street.
So I put this on the agenda. We've, I've been talking to the residents for months at the West Warwick Manor. There's a couple of benches there that have caused a disturbance. And the residents put together this petition within the last, what, the last two or three weeks or so, they put this petition together, signed by, it looks like around 75 or so residents. I'll read what they wrote in this petition that they, that they gave me. They also gave Director O'Rourke as well, correct? Says, "We, the undersigned residents, are asking for the removal or relocation of the benches on the bike trail behind our building. The bench is a nuisance and has attracted a group of persons who loiter, litter, drink, and sometimes harass the elderly residents who try to enjoy the rear of our building. We appreciate anything you can do to improve our situation." I'm, what my suggestion would be, and I've talked to all the parties involved, talked to Chief of the Police Department, Fire Department, I talked to DPW Director. These benches have caused an issue. I'm suggesting we remove both of them immediately and try to relocate them somewhere come the springtime. I did actually just get a call yesterday from Wendy at the Health Equity Zone about potentially maybe putting one up at the at the orchard, up at the top of Factory Street, next to the playground as a suggestion. You know, maybe the other one, there's a few other locations I think the other one could go that would still benefit the people of the bike path either. Maybe right in front of Project Hand Up, or possibly further down there that need DPW. It's a well-visible area, well-lit. I think there might be less issues. And of course, the residents of the Manor, I don't know how familiar with everybody is over there, but they have that beautiful outdoor area where they sit there, so unfortunately, they've been the target of some incidents. I don't know if, I'm gonna ask Deb, Deb Bridgeman, if you'd want to come up. She lives at the Manor to kind of speak on it some more. No, I'm not doing it justice. They're the ones that live with it every day. You just sent it to me. Okay, I'll look through my messages now, sorry. I tried not to look at my phone during the meeting. Somebody will be yelling at me later on on Facebook, but I'll look now. So if you want to speak while I look, try to look for that.
State your name and address.
Okay, Deborah Bridgeman, and I live at the West Warwick Manor. At 62 Robert Street. We have beautiful grounds, and we like to enjoy them. Many people there are elderly, were disabled. And I'm gonna give you a for instance, and I think I did have the police report on it. It was on July 26th. This is the abuse we take on a nightly or by-nightly basis. Sitting there at the picnic tables and just enjoying ourselves, talking about getting old and what we're gonna do and all, everything, being happy the best we can. A car pulls up and the bike path is loaded with people. Guy comes out of the SUV lit like no tomorrow, and he threatens to kill somebody on the bike path. Turns around to us, I don't want to even use the language, it's in the police report, that he was going to effing kill us, and I won't say the other words. We backed up from the picnic tables, and we went up on our little patio. And I went into the community room to open the doors to let the others in. There was five others, and they have disabilities. We got them into the community room. This man came, and he was banging on the community room doors. It's on film. I went into the ladies' room. I locked myself in there. I called 911. There's also another resident who was in the community room on the floor, calling 911 because we were in the dark. Two days later, I suffered a heart attack. I was supposed to go in that night. I didn't feel right. I thought it was something else, but I suffered that. It was from the stress. It's no coronary, no blockages, no nothing. To live like that and to watch them deal the drugs, you can actually seal transactions of drugs from their dealers or from each other. We have numerous times where we've had to call the fire department and get rescues there because they're falling down, they're threatening us. The police, there's photos where the police had to stop one gentleman one night because he was going after the firemen. So we were taking pictures of it, and it's just an everyday thing. The one thing was a machete that they go through our garbage, little, for the people that do smoke, and they have little canisters near the picnic table. Everybody's so neat. We love and appreciate that building and our grounds. And he comes over with a machete, and then he's swirling it like he was gonna kill somebody.
Is this the same, I'm just confused. I- Is this like one person?
No, you must have 100 of them over there.
100 people?
Oh, I would say in the woods, down in the embank, you have tent cities. Now, we have three. Because I walk the bike path in the morning while my husband and there's other gentlemen out there just a little bit, and to feed, you know, the birds and stuff. And you look down there, and there's like five here, 10 there. Now, as you're walking the bike path, two to the left down the embankment.
You're talking tents of people?
Tents and people. They live there. And now we have them rows. It's on the right-hand side also now, right? Yeah, so we're having them from everywhere. And you find out that they're coming in from Providence, Lincoln, One Socket. They're coming in from everywhere. Everywhere. I mean, it's just, you can't even go out there and sit on the benches, our benches, and-
And I want to clarify too, this is not like an anti-homeless stance by trying to remove these benches. It's a much larger issue. It's much larger than these two benches.
Are the benches the draw?
The benches are the draw.
Because I'm not quite sure what the benches mean.
Yes, the benches are the draw for this manner.
I wish you would put some, take the benches, just put some beautiful trees, and we promise you, we'll maintain them.
But would that prevent the gentleman coming in the SUV?
They sit there, they linger there all day long.
I think the gentleman from your situation was coming to fight somebody that might have been on the benches.
But the people that are there all day-
On the benches, yeah, I know she might not have clarified.
People that are there all day long.
Okay.
Attract these people.
So are you saying, so I'm just trying to think, we have, I don't know, just say two benches.
Yes.
Nobody's on them. If we remove-
They sleep on them.
All right, what's, all right. If we remove, I'm just trying to clarify. If we remove the benches,
Yes.
do you think these issues are still going to exist?
No. I'm gonna tell you why.
Okay.
Because there's nowhere for them to congregate, and it's not healthy in that area for the residents of the Manor. I mean,
I'm just trying to figure out-
It's not safe for us.
If the benches are removed, because I agree with you, nobody should have to live like that.
Absolutely not.
Especially at that age. Now, can you imagine if that happened? I'm only 61. Can you imagine if that had happened to an 80-year-old or a 70-something-year-old or a 90-year-old? And we do have them there.
Shouldn't happen to anybody.
No.
No.
But so, is that, you brought up a few different issues. With the benches, if we were to remove the benches and place them somewhere else? And, but now the situation needs to be evaluated. Is this the topic we're on? Is this a police matter? So-
Police are there constantly. I mean, in the last two weeks, they've calmed down since you- but they're still there.
Can I ask the chief to come up for a moment? Because I've had a lot of conversations with Chief Levine about this issue and similar issues, but that are not on the agenda. And maybe you could add a little bit. I know you took a walk down there. I know you, we talked a little bit about some of the calls, maybe you've gotten over the last couple of months, maybe if you wanted to elaborate on some of that.
Yeah, so obviously, when we get calls and we can identify criminal conduct, we make the arrest. I mean, that's as simple as they come. Obviously, we're all, we all understand that sometimes people act up, and when a uniformed police officer shows up in a marked police car, they don't, they don't act in criminal behavior. That's the result. We rely on people to call when other people are acting up. You know, the residents of the Manor are fantastic. They will call us when people are acting up. However, a lot of the time, nine times out of 10, when we show up, there's not criminal conduct going on. And the residents, rightfully so, aren't really raising their hand saying, I'd love to give you a statement because that's the guy that did X, Y, and Z. So that doesn't happen very often. We've certainly increased our presence on Manor Drive, on Robert Street, and on the bike path. I was up there this morning, probably around 8:30, 9 o'clock. I've been doing my own checks. My officers have been doing thorough checks of that area. Regarding the benches, I think the issue becomes, the benches are in a secluded area directly in back of where the residents of the Manor are sitting there trying to enjoy maybe a cigarette or, you know, just enjoying the sunshine. When I was there this morning, there were several residents outside just enjoying the day. So I think, I think the area that the benches are in right now is secluded. It provides some cover for people to do bad things. So I think if those benches are removed temporarily, and we find a better location that's more highly visible to passersby, to the police, people that are not doing criminal-type behaviors, I think that would be an asset. At the end of the day, we want the residents to feel safe. We don't want them intimidated. We don't want them harassed and ridiculed or anything else that's going on. So I think, I think that the temporary solution is to move those benches, remove those benches, and have a discussion of where maybe they should be. Certainly, we don't want to infringe on people's ability to enjoy the bike path, use the bike path, sit down for a little while, recover as they go along their journey. We don't want that to be an area where undesirable behavior is festering.
Because at this point now, and I know some people have messaged me saying, well, what about the people that want to sit on those benches? You can attest this. It's probably that doesn't happen right now anyway because they're not able to use them at this point anyway, correct?
Actually, I'm afraid. You put up something up on the wonderfully majestic, you know?
Did you see her come to the microphone? Just, sorry.
Your post on wonderfully majestic, and I know that I was tagged in it. But a lot of people, as you've seen, there's girls being chased. She had to go hide behind a house near the Manor because she was afraid. And then there was another woman with her husband, who also, they just got off the bike path. And the people that we used to see, like maybe last year and the year before, walking the dogs, and even recently, there is no one that hardly like walk their dogs or, you know, good people. It's bad. It's becoming tent city. It looks like an underpass of Route 10.
And I also want to clarify, like, because I understand the plight of the homeless that are out there, but I think-
I feel bad for them.
I think we can all be good neighbors, whether you're homeless or not. It's not fair for you guys at the Manor or anywhere to be able to deal with that, and they're in a bad spot, and I just hope we can-
And they're all- And they're all, they're very, um, they, they harass you, they threaten you. I'm afraid to even go out there at night.
My question is, majority of these people, are they like, they can rip the buses and coming in from all those places? Are they, they come and just walking up the hill from the tent city and sitting there and harassing people?
I know a lot of them hanging at the gazebo, because I can recognize the faces and so can all of us. But, um, they just live there. There are people from Tennessee that moved up from Tennessee just recently. In two weeks and moved and lived down in Tent City over there.
I, I don't know if the removing the benches is gonna solve the problem, because the same people are still gonna be there. They'll just stand or sit on the ground. So I just don't know if that's gonna solve your problem. I'm not saying I'm not gonna vote to remove them.
It became their living room.
I understand that, but if that's where they're already familiar with and that's where they're gonna sit, or my bigger fear. Is they're gonna walk across the bike path instead of sitting at your tables?
They have.
Yeah, so if they don't have those, it's more likely that they're gonna go sit over there.
You can have them removed.
Yeah, it's, it's easy. Yeah, I mean, if they come sit on their benches, that's an easy, like, I mean. It's an easier fix.
As far as walking down there, I don't like to walk down there either with my family because of the.
Why can't we move them across the street? There's the auto body, there's the, uh, bridge, the.
The benches, I, I mean, we'll.
Why can't they go over there?
If we remove the benches, we'll find, we'll, we'll, we'll do some research and find a better spot for the benches.
I'm just saying, I don't think removing the benches is gonna solve your problem. If those, if, if the majority of the people are coming up from tent area, they're still gonna live there, there's still gonna be a problem. I'm just saying.
Well, how come they don't do this in Coventry?
They probably do.
Don't hear of it.
I, I'd like to see what, what, um, our DPW, our interim director has any input on this.
Before he does, every holiday for the last four years. I, I, my apartment faces Tent City, I call it, and, and, and Natco. And we have to look at all of that. They just take it, they trashed it. BPW, they've, they picked up last year. I mean, it was, it's disgraceful. Not only, you know, are we in fear of our lives, but. He has the police report happened on July twenty-sixth or seventh. I can't remember the date. But, yeah, it was a, a level-two sex offender that came after us.
And again, I, I know.
Jeff, if you wanna.
Before anybody else speaks, um, I know I sent out an email last week. I think you all were copied on it. And I know the chief, Mark Knott, um, Jeff, everybody we met at the gazebo, and they are right. I've been to both places, a lot of familiar faces in both spots. I, I fully understand the aspect of homelessness. But whether you're homeless or you're not, when you're on these properties, town properties, you must follow the laws. And if you're drinking, public intoxication, um, what sexual things, whatever's going on there. Is everything that any one of us would be in trouble for. And that's what I put in my email.
And this, and this hasn't been ignored. This has been something that has, has been ongoing. And I mean, me and the chief have talked about this. Feeling forever, but especially now within, within the last year, it's, it's become an issue. Uh, it's become worse. Things are worse for people. There's more people that are out on the streets. Things are worse. We've, we've tried to do things as a town. Uh, and we, we're, we have a great town as far as offering a lot of resources for people. And that's a great thing, but you're gonna have a lot of people that are hopefully using some of those resources. So sometimes it's a, you know, you get in a tough situation where you try to help as many people as you can, but, you know. You don't want it to be at the detriment of residents like yourselves and residents around the gazebo and stuff like that. There's, there's a balance to be had and it's never gonna be perfect. Uh, I think we just try to do the best that we can. And in this situation, if we can remove those benches and alleviate some of that. Is, is, am, am I like naive enough to think that all of a sudden there's, there's gonna be no issues whatsoever? No. But if it eliminates seventy-five percent of those issues, I think those residents are gonna be happy that it's seventy-five percent of those issues are eliminated.
Is the, is this town property that Tent City is on?
It's right on the bike path.
Is it town property?
I don't, I don't know where it is. I don't know.
And that would be up to the property owner.
Property owner aware?
Don't know.
I don't know exactly where the line is.
Well, I think that's a, that's full separate issue. I mean, because I'm thinking here, there's, everything's on town property. You know?
This, I mean, the benches obviously are, yeah.
Karen Senkowitz, the manor. Um, I think removing the benches won't one hundred percent make the problem go away. But I walk up and down that bike path all the time. I go all the way to Coventry. I'll go walk, some days I go all the way to Station Street and then back again. And the only place I see that type of congregation going on is where those benches are. They're in a beautiful spot. It's shaded, it's peaceful, it's right next to Brookside Avenue. So it's easy access for, if somebody wants to go there. Removing the benches won't make the tents go away, but it's a start. And I think Deb's suggestion, and I think Councilman Messier also, his suggestion was to make, take one of the benches and just move it across Brookside. And put it across from that auto body place. And that, that'll be in the sun.
I think, I think, no, my suggestion was a little further, I think. And again, this, the, the, where we put them doesn't have to be determined tonight, but.
Let me just clarify something. I, I personally think we remove them in general without putting them anywhere in that vicinity, because what's gonna happen?
They'll move down there.
They're gonna move down there and the owner of the auto body shop and everybody's gonna be coming here saying, please remove.
That's why if we remove them now and.
Put them back.
Well, if we remove, if we remove them and wait for the winter to find a better spot, and you, you said you do have a spot where you would be able to store them, if you want to step up, Jeff. For the, for the winter of, and then we can find a place to relocate them in the spring.
Jeff, call the Public Works Director. I do agree with you guys that the benches are a problem. I've driven through there at four, five in the morning. And there are people sleeping on them constantly. The syringes on the ground all around it are constant. The trash is ridiculous around it. Pox goes down there two, three times a week to empty the trash. If we're gonna decide to remove the benches, I don't believe they go anywhere on the bike path. That's my opinion. I, I have a spot they can go that, uh, will be perfect in my personal opinion. Uh, but that's something we can discuss later. But I, I think if we're going to remove them, we remove them permanently and we do not put them back on the bike path anywhere. I don't believe that that's gonna alleviate the congregating there a hundred percent, but it is a start. You can drive by there at any given time and there's five, six, seven, eight people there. They are right, you, you know. I've never seen any of them do anything criminal when I've been around there, but.
It goes to the same thing with the chief said. If you see somebody that works for the town there, you're probably not.
Unfortunately, I'm sure it does happen. Uh, but, um. Moving, removing the benches and putting them somewhere else on the bike path is just creating a bigger problem somewhere else. So if we're gonna remove them, let's just.
And again, and that's why, to me, where we put them was, was a second, was a later ques, was a later answer. Right now.
But I do have a place to store them. If we decide we're not gonna put them anywhere for now, I do have a place we can store.
Thanks, Jeff.
Just state your name and address for the record. You are a resident of sixty-two Roberts.
Yes, Jack Bridgeman. I'm a resident of sixty-two Roberts. About thirty percent of the people on that list that signed it has watched people on the bench have sex on the bench. And this is at two in the afternoon. Just last week, a woman was over there and she had sex with three guys on the bench while people were setting out. You, you shouldn't have to sit and watch that.
Totally agree with you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
You'd have to make a motion.
Um, make a motion to, are we gonna, are we gonna do a, can we do a vote on it?
Oh, if you make a motion to remove the benches.
I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, to follow through and remove these benches.
I'll second that.
Move and second. Any other discussion?
I just, uh, I agree with removing them. I just, I'm hoping that it solves your problem, but I don't think it will. I think we need to have the owner of that property addressed, uh, as a town. And, you know, see what, uh, can be done as far as that goes, to move the tent city out. I think that's a better solution than just the benches, but. It's a start.
Know the comments? All in favor? Opposed? I just have it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Good luck. Thank you for coming out too.
Thank you.
Consideration or request from Councilman Messier to increase the amount of waste receptacles throughout the West Work like that.
This should be a simple one. I don't even know if it necessarily needed to be on the agenda, but because when I had the conversation with, about number three with Jeff. Uh, he brought up that, you know, about trying to add some more receptacles throughout the bike path. Obviously, the big question would be who, who would be emptying them. Um, Jeff, Jeff had some, some ideas of where to put them. And he believes you would be able to empty them pretty regularly, so they wouldn't just be overflowing.
Yeah, the Pox Department travels that two or three times a week and cleans up any trash or whatever. Uh, we have, as long as they're still there, I believe we have the trash receptacles that were on the bike path behind the rec center. The, the wooden, it looked like wood on the outside. We can pre, place them at the beginning of each section of the bike path and maybe one in the middle of each one. And put bags in them, lock the tops, so we don't have any issues. And Pox, when they go and, uh, empty the trash over here at the manor and over by the old auto body place. They'll, uh, empty them. Hopefully that'll deter people from throwing more on the ground than.
And, and, and thank you. Bike path has, in the past two years, so many less complaints. I don't think I've gotten a complaint on the bike path. Minus, save for this issue over here as far as the bike path being a mess. And you, you guys have done a great job the last couple of years. And it used to be an issue where we would get, all of us would get complaints throughout the whole season. So, thank you and thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So where do we stand with this?
I mean, yes, make a motion. I mean, he said he has the trash.
Let Jeff handle it. Cause he's gonna, if they don't work, then it's, that's gonna be on him to make.
Yeah, I recommend let the DPW.
Yeah, I just put it on, I put it on here. It was, it was, fell in with the last question. I figured it was some of the people most.
Take no action.
I would, I would agree with you. Just in case it doesn't work, like he doesn't have to come back here to say.
With one set fire to, or they're abused or knocked over or whatever. I mean, it's up to, you guys would make that determination.
I would agree with that.
Thanks.
Consideration to give conditional approval to the residents of twelve Orange Street to build a dock adjacent to Madison Pond.
Mark?
Good evening. Mr. Thatcher's here, so he can expand upon this, but just so I can give you some quick background. On, on May twelfth of this year, Ms. Deborah Markey and, and Mr. Thomas Thatcher of twelve Orange Street. Had sent me a letter requesting permission to build a dock from their property onto Madison Pond for personal use. They had conducted research and determined that the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management handles and regulates the permitting for docks and floats. Through its wetland permitting and review process. And then the town generally doesn't have, um, any involvement in that. But when the water, the body of water is owned by another party. DEM requires a signed notarized letter from the owner of the water body stating that the applicant has permission. From the property owner to apply for a wetland permit for the dock. I work with Solicitor Aldi Fiore to determine that, in fact, the town does own Madison Pond. And I also spoke with several representatives of other communities to see if they had a process for this type of request. What I learned was that the only communities that had clear procedures were the coastal communities. Who work with DEM and coordinate with the Coastal Resource Management Council, um, more saltwater type places. So to move forward, I, I believe the, the proper path is that if the council would consider it. Was to be to provide conditional approval to proceed with the DEM permitting process. Um, I had sent this memo along with a copy of the DEM fact sheet for your review. The next, the first condition other, after conditional approval would be for Mr. Thatcher to seek a variance from the zoning board. For the setback requirement of twenty-five feet in that R-eight zone. To sign a waiver of liability, hold harmless agreement with the town. Provide documentation from their homeowner's insurance carrier, sir, the carrier, that the dock would be covered by their policy. And name the town as an insured party. Once those three conditions are met, I, by your vote, I would be authorized. To provide that letter of permission, um, that DEM requires. And he'd follow the DEM permitting process, submitting detailed plans and going through that process. And then once all that was approved and completed, then we would properly record those items with the clerk's office. So I sent the fact sheet, but I invited Mr. Thatcher here. If anyone had any particular questions. Or concerns that he could address tonight.
Will, will we have any concerns of others wanting to do the same thing and, and congestion and, and or?
I, I can't really answer. Obviously, the first one opens up that possibility.
We talked about this, we, we couldn't even come up with another piece of land in West Work where this would potentially be possible. I mean, I guess it could come up, but we couldn't figure another one out when we talked about it.
Right. I mean, Madison Pond, I, I know probably has, you know, probably seven properties. I mean, part of it, much of it is overgrown at the edge. Um, there's not a lot of ideal properties, if you would, that, you know. You'd put a small fishing pier for your grandkids to, to fish off of, but.
Exactly.
I'll let Mr. Thatcher expand on that if you'd like.
I say enjoy your dock.
I appreciate that. That was easy.
What size do you?
I'm going with the maximum size, uh, for, through DEM regulations, which is twenty feet long, six feet wide. I also have the show, which I've drawn in, saw an area of disturbance, which is basically going to be three feet around the dock. So canoe or kayak or whatever that we want to put in or jumbo. We can do that without any, uh, disturbance from these trees that are growing up.
So you're not, you're not envisioning any, any DEM problems once you start?
No, I've already been to DEM. And, um, what I have here, it's ready to go. Except for permission from the town or the owner of the pond.
My next question is one I always ask because it deals with liability. Is your yard right now fenced in?
No, it's not. We're on a dead-end street, okay? A house, last house on the left.
I know, I know where you live, but what I'm getting at is, can anyone, especially children or pets, access that dock? From anywhere besides the street?
Anywhere besides the street.
When your backyard.
Yes.
You have the water.
Yes.
On both side yards, is there any access points from neighbors that don't have to go by the street?
From neighbors that would have to cross the street, go through our yard from the front into the back?
Well, I'm getting it. There's no, there's no access ingress or egress.
No, 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 no. Currently now.
You don't anticipate any children meandering over?
No.
Or pets or things of that nature?
And as a matter of fact, um, when I first moved in, it was cold out, the palm was frozen over. And I noticed people walking through my yard to go on the ice or ice skate. And I've had people, after posting trespassing signs, three of them. I've had two people ask me to use the ice. And I said, I'm sorry, but for insurance reasons, I can't allow you to enter through here. I said, I know there used to be a city, uh, landing somewhere on the other side when they used to ice skate there years ago.
There's more ice skating thirty years.
So that's why, that's why I sent.
Cause normally, normally the ice isn't safe. But again, a lot of the water's gone too.
Yeah, a lot of the waters, it's down low. It's down low. Yeah, it's down about two and a half, three feet. And that's not a deep pond, except for one area. There's one area that's about thirty feet deep.
If you do get approval, how long do you think your project is gonna take?
Oh, jeez. Me and my guys, I own my own company.
Oh, you're, okay, good.
Yeah, I'm a contractor too.
I saw the truck. Yeah, I saw the truck on the way in.
I see yellow, that's about it.
I, I would agree with the.
But yeah, I would, I would pull all the proper permits, starting with you guys getting this. I would go back to DEM, show them that. Then whatever you guys need, I'll have. I, I already have some of it. I already have the insurance.
This is gonna be a permanent dock.
Yes.
I would, I would recommend that we have a mechanism in place to make sure that insurance, not that I don't think you would, but that we are named insured. And we get a copy of that each and every year.
I have a copy for you right now, if you'd like it.
Yes. But every year, you need to make sure.
Any further action by the town manager, that's gonna be done on a annual basis.
Right.
And, and again, as Councilman Bojette said, I think it's, enjoy your docks, but I think also that. Might be a start of something new in Madison Pond. Once one person sees.
I think you're right.
It might get some more use out of it. Some people around there might say, wow, you know, let's hire him.
Maybe I can get some more business and build a dock for him.
But again, you know, they, you know.
Unfortunately, I think it's backwards on the screen, but.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's a. But, um, any other questions, I need somebody to make a motion.
I'll make the motion, second.
Second.
Motion to approve, um, seconded by Councilman Messier, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
Enjoy your dock. Very much, have a great night, I appreciate it.
Send us pictures.
Want to see a ribbon.
I will.
Okay, all right, all right.
Sure.
Thank you, don't forget your, your binder.
Your binder over here. Leave all your plans behind, somebody's going to take, build another dock. Have a good night.
Consideration a request from Councilman Lichardi to hold Halloween event on October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two.
There's, there's a slight change in the date, um, that actually, it's today, it's not the twenty-ninth, it's the twenty-second, so it's, um, I gave Sarah the twenty-ninth, but the trunk or treat by West Warwick Soccer will be held on the twenty-ninth, and no sense of competing, it's not about competition. But, um, the request is for a town-sponsored event to be held at Maisy Quinn School, utilizing the ins, the inside cafeteria and the playground outside, the basketball lights in the field in the back, not Ambie Smith. So I just wanted to bring it before the council, again, my family will do all the work, everybody just show up, anybody wants to help, there's more, more, more help needed, so, um, and it's all free, it's all free for the town, people pay enough in taxes, so they should get something.
Just make a motion and amend the date.
I'll make the motion to amend the date for the twenty-ninth to the twenty-second.
Second.
Moving second, this is for approval for the Halloween event, October twenty-second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
Now, we've got to do it again, because now it's as amended.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of a twenty-twenty-two Ford F-one-fifty pickup truck.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Move second to chief.
Hi, so our Fire Prevention Bureau, we have three members, um, two of the three vehicles that they have were purchased, used six years ago, um, I think the oldest is being around two thousand and eight, uh, it has, uh, one of them has rust in the frame. So we need, they need to get a new vehicle. We have a opportunity to buy a vehicle, uh, F-one-fifty through the purchase plan, the master purchase agreement, and, um, that's why I'd say our funding's going to come from the apparatus replacement and the, um, smoke detector fees, because the truck will be responding to fire prevention inspections, it responds for, um, investigations also. So that's within the scope of what that, um, those fees were collected for.
Any questions for the chief?
Just a comment, that's a good price.
It is a good price, yeah, yeah, today's day and age.
It's a really good price.
You can't lease a Kia Sportage from under seven hundred.
Would the old truck be still, still be usable?
It, it'll be in reserve for a short time, um, but there is rust in the frame, and I don't know how long it's going to pass the inspection.
Any other questions for the chief? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, thank you.
Thanks.
Upcoming appointment, Sewer Use Sport Review, Appointment to fill vacancy as an alternate member for a three-year term. Sewer Use Sport Review, Appointment to fill vacancy as a regular member for a three-year term. And Arctic Redevelopment Agency has a reappointment or appointment for a five-year term coming up in October of twenty-twenty, I'm sorry, ending October twenty-twenty-seven. Public forum.
Any public comment?
Nope.
Wondering why you were here.
I know, I decided to come for good stuff, good stuff, so we're getting into fall, and I am hosting an introduction to composting class. It's free for all residents, so I'm just inviting you to invite your residents as well. It will be next Tuesday from six-thirty to seven-thirty in the Thomas Lamb Building. All ages, anybody is invited to come, um, those residents that do participate in the class and that would like to purchase their own compost bin, through a grant, I was able to get, um, great price with that. So if you're an attendee to the compost class, you can purchase the compost bin for seventeen dollars and fifty cents, and they're normally forty-five dollars if you ever want to do it. So I'm just out here, I'll be putting the flyers out, the senior center, the library, here, and I'll be putting the notification out on all the, um, medias, hopefully red alert, but I'll just share this with you guys.
I, will you, you have some sort of flyer right there?
Yes.
Will that go into online?
Yes.
As I know.
The new, the new website, that was very nice.
Well, that's. But, but there's, there's an events area on the new website.
Yes, it'll, it'll be included on our site.
Thank you.
Various other social medias.
Thank you, Nicole.
Is this on the Facebook, your Facebook page?
It's going up in the morning, yep, so I asked.
Not your Facebook page, you don't.
Recycling, West Warwick, solid waste recycling Facebook page, but I just thought it would be an opportunity for me to spread the word, and I really just, it's an hour. Everybody take advantage of it, we're getting into that season, get composting, all right?
Actually, we, we should, we used to do, we used to do composting down at the sewer plant, and we got rid of that, but with what we're paying Synergy Row and, and landfill, yeah, exactly.
Why the mud smells now?
Any other public comment? Hearing none, I need a motion to move into executive session.
Make a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
Move the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was nobody online, right?
Hold on, sorry, we do have one more, we do have one more public comment, Pete Cottrell is online.
We have public comment, we have somebody online.
Hold on one second, yeah.
If anybody wants to stay and listen.
We make a motion to.
Withdraw the motion.
Make a motion to return to pub, uh, to open session.
Second.
You can leave if you want to, it's just.
Yeah, you're not forced.
There was one other person, yeah.
I don't know.
You don't know?
It might be about your compost.
It'll be a podcast.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, David, can you hear me?
Yes.
Pete Cottrell, New Wiki Street, I'm glad to see that Jeff didn't, uh, get out, because this question is directed to him. And I know he's shaking, he said, where do we stand with Cardis? I know mo- mo- mostly, for the seating council, have, you know, I, I've dealt with the flooding in, in all of that, put one point seven million dollars into a drainage project. Cardis comes in, takes the brims out, the town puts them in, Cardis takes them out, now we're back to getting water in the yard, where do we stand?
Pete, I've been in constant contact with Cardi to fix the problem, they promised me the problem will be fixed. They've been on a time crunch trying to get some other things paved. Um, I did tell you, because I was told that when they did Andrews Avenue, it was going to be done. Uh, but then I was told by one of the foremen that they needed a different berm machine and a different roller to do the job. Uh, I've, have talked to them several times in the last week, it is still on the list, but they have not pinned down a date to get it done, I've asked and asked and asked, but dealing with Cardi this year has been a nightmare, and, uh, I'm doing the best I can with what I have. I could put a hand berm out there, but it's not going to look as good as what's there right now, um, if that's acceptable to you. I can do it personally this Friday.
Why don't, why don't you have your guys come out like they did two years ago and use the berm machine that the DPW has?
Well, the problem with that is, is we, we would have to take out the berm that is already there. If we put another berm there, we have to take out that berm, because it's not going to adhere to it properly. The berm that they put there was a hand berm with a machine, but they went higher. We can't go on top of that with our machine, they have a machine that the arm lifts up on, and it goes right over the top of it. Like I said, we can come out there and put a, put a berm on there, a hand berm and tamp it down, but it's not going to look as professional as the one they have there right now.
I wouldn't say the one that's there now looks professional by any means, but, I mean, you've seen it yourself. You know.
Yes, no, I did, you're right.
You know, even, even across the street, that doesn't look professional at all.
And I had, I don't know if you were home or not, but I had, uh, after we had the conversation here at the council meeting last month, I had JP from Cardis out there, and we looked at it, and again, he promised me it would be done. And I told him it needed to be done from that garage on your side of the road, right up into the corner. And on the other side of the road, from the tree around the corner, right up to the neighbor's driveway.
I didn't see anybody go by, I can tell you.
No, we, I was out there with them in the morning.
I'm not saying you weren't, I'm just saying I didn't see anybody.
Okay.
So it's still on hold.
It, it's, it's still, it's still on the list to be done, but they just haven't given me a date to, to come out there and do it, and I've been in constant contact. There's actually a couple of other places that they have to do also.
Okay, so what do I do if I retain water in my basement? Like I did three years ago.
Mr. Cottrell, he can't answer that question. No, he can't, no, he can't, you, you asked the question for informational purposes only, and Mr. Caldwell responded to you, now you're asking about what could happen, that's speculation, conjecture, and obviously, there's an aspect of liability to it, so I'm going to instruct Mr. Caldwell not to answer that question.
Well, I'm going to instruct the, the, the council in, in the town, if we will be in litigation if we get water through the yard all over again. I'll be before you every week, every meeting, till it's resolved. I know, David, you said be patient, but how, how many times can you be patient, this has been going on long enough. My opinion is just fire Cardis and let the town do it, they did a spectacular job. And here we are again.
All right, people, we'll take, we'll let Jeff take it from here, and then, uh, he'll get in touch with you.
All right.
Thank you.
Jeff, I'd appreciate if you can come out, and, and we'll meet and we'll talk together instead of going this route. Fair enough.
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Okay, great, thanks, I appreciate it.
Any other public comment?
Motion to adjourn again?
Motion to go into executive.
Motion to go into executive session again?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
Good night again.